Welcome, everybody. I'm glad you're all here. I would like to call to order the school board work session on finance. Today's date is January 11th. So with that brief introduction, I would tell the audience that one of our members, Sarah Stivlin, is not able to be here in person, but her image is with us. And hopefully, all communications will go well, so she'll be an active participant with us as well. In addition to that, it appears all our members are here and staff as well. So thanks, everybody, for joining us. So with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Pontrelli, and she'll give us a little background.
Great, thank you. So for your agenda, it's fairly brief, but what we'd like to do first is bring you back through the budget assumptions and projections for this year. And as a reminder for the community and for the board and new board members, that our Budget Adjustment Committee is just that, a committee made up of teachers, principals, district administration, community members, and board members, who come together to make assumptions about what might happen with finance as regarding to education in the district overall, based on a lot of emerging influences that are happening at the state and local level. And this process has been in place for some time. We've gotten better and better. As the board knows, we were, our projections, we came within about $300,000 in a hundred-plus million dollar budget. That's pretty good. And so the process has been refined over time. And part of that is really thanks to our employee groups who've worked with us to have a better understanding of what those budget assumptions are, how they impact the decisions we make. Our staff and our negotiations committee for the SCA have spent a lot, and other union groups have spent a lot of time, investment of time and education in learning more about what the process is. So the more we learn, the better understanding we have together, the closer we've been able to come on those projections. So just a reminder that today, the budget assumptions that we will be going through with you was created by a committee, but it is always the board's prerogative to look at that and say, no, you know, a different time, different people are on the table, we have different ideas of what that might look like. That is really what we base our work on. It's not one person making those decisions, it's a committee that pulls that together. Then we'll remind the board of the approved reductions that you've already made and how that impacts the budget, and give you some projections to look at. And then finally, the board will have the opportunity to talk about what are our next steps? And those are options that we've talked about before. Either remains the same, do nothing else, and use some of your fund balance or your savings to be able to pay for some of the additional costs, or you can cut to balance a budget, or you can go deeper to start looking at the fund balance. Those are all choices that you have to make as we move forward. So with that, what I'd like to do is have Director Hoheisel begin and go through the budget assumptions that the committee created in November, and just make sure that everybody is up to speed on those budget assumptions. After she does that, then we'll show you how that's impacted our budget moving forward. And then probably after that is the best time to ask questions, because then you might say, "Well, if we made this adjustment in our assumptions, what might that mean for our overall budget?" All right? All right, I'll turn it over to Director Hoheisel.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I'm going to apologize, because I'm going to be looking down when I'm inclined to look up to speak to all of you, but I do need to read the material in front of me. One other thing that I'd actually like to preface this presentation with is not only did that committee do the work and completed their work in about early to mid-November, other factors that have come into play as we look at revised numbers is the revised budget that was approved by the school board December 20th, I believe, maybe the 20th. And so the revised budget, and then it was also the levy. When you, when the levy was approved in December, those numbers now impact the 1920 school year. So we have three different sources of information that created updated numbers. So when it comes into question of, you know, why, good, bad, or otherwise, why wasn't this brought before, or why didn't we know? Because things are done at points of time. It is a budget, it is a projection, and as soon as something that is material, quite large, whether it be the levy or a revised budget, comes to fruition and approved, that's typically when we provide an update to the board to give you a fresh look at the most recent numbers that we have. So I will move into the budget assumptions for, and this is the 1920 school year through the 21, 22 school year. Please recognize that the farther out you get, and the reason why we do three years is the farther out you get, the more unreliable the numbers become. There's different factors that come into play, which are enrollment and state aid and contracts, and it, there's just not a lot of teeth, once you get beyond three years as far as predictability of what our financial forecast will look like. As far as the revenue components on the budget assumptions, the committee looked and said, "What do we, what do we think is going to happen in enrollment projections?" And they believed that we would see a slight increase next year, and at the time, it was about 30 students, which brought us to 8,300, and that we would at least remain consistent with that population. So it was, moving forward, let's just assume we're going to have 8,300 students attend the district. We're not, we have no anticipation of us declining. We might grow, but 8,300 is the number that we want to look at. We also said that we believe that we'll get money from the state of Minnesota. This next year, it will be 2 percent, 2 percent on our general education formula, and then 1 and 1/2 percent year three. Just a note, that 2 percent on the state's general education formula is about $1 million a year. So any variation with that, if the state were to come back and give us 3, you're looking at a half a million. If we were to get less, that's, that can be the swing in our budget as the legislative process moves forward. Years ago, we had had, when the state was working through their budgets and experienced deficits, they started playing with what, the timing of when they would give schools their money, and which was called a shift, that of when we'd receive it. We anticipate nothing of that happening at the state level in the next three years. Now we get into a couple of categorical components of types of revenue we receive. Literacy incentive aid, we're assuming at $430,000 a year. That's usually in the $400,000 category. And what literacy incentive aid is, it takes into account your reading scores in third and fourth grade, and there's a growth factor component, and you get a percent of money based on the culmination of that information. We believe our compensatory revenue will decrease to 700,000. Again, I want to say we've been in the range of 725 to 750 on any given year. We believe that might slightly go down. We believe that there will be no changes in referendum for the next three years. Special ed funding increases $200,000 a year to allow for potential growth in formula. We are at a cap. The state has allowed a growth factor, but we're assuming that we're just going to go with a flat 200,000 increase in each year in revenue above what we currently receive. Status quo on Q Comp, which means that we will continue to receive aid for Q Comp, but we will not levy for Q Comp. And then other formula-driven revenues will follow the general education formula. So there's other formula-driven revenues would be things such as gifted and talented. If they're linked to the gen ed formula, and the gen ed formula gets 2 percent, that too will be adjusted. There's different components throughout our revenue streams that follow the general education formula. And then no changes to miscellaneous revenue. We're essentially saying, if we receive so much money in gate, meaning attendance at a football game for a season, we're just going to hold that flat. There's not enough variation there to see any significant increase or decrease. That's the revenue side. As we work through the expenditures, we assumed that contracts will have a 0 percent increase. And again, the board and the bargaining groups make decisions when they get to the table. So that's why we assumed nothing, but we did say that there would be steps and lengths, which equal approximately $1 million. Somewhere between $800,000 and $1 million. Put in $1 million, saying, everybody's going to advance through their respective salary schedules and their bargaining agreements, but we're not going to presume anybody gets addition, anything additional beyond that. And then when identifying health insurance and dental insurance, we're saying this is what the district contribution's going to go. It's not what the percent of health insurance as a whole is going to go, it's just what are we going to contribute that goes up. And we assumed 3 and 1/2 each year for health insurance, and then 1 percent each year for dental. OPEB trust payment, $1 million annually, so we have two mechanics in place to pay for OPEB now. This year will be, 1920 will be our first year. We draw money from a trust. We have $8 million left in that trust, and we draw $1 million to support. And OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. So think like retiree health insurance. We draw down from the trust, and we used to be drawing down from the general fund, and now this last levy cycle that was approved in December, we're actually levying for the diff, what the general fund was paying. So we take a drawdown from the trust, and now we're actually going to levy for the difference, so it relieved the impact to the general fund. Staff development will remain at 2 percent. Again, now I know the board has adopted that there would be a reduction in staff development, but this is the criteria of the set aside from the state of Minnesota has to be 2 percent. We're not changing the criteria from the state of Minnesota. How we do it internally, we have adjusted, but we're not, that's what we believe will continue to be the criteria from the state. Transportation costs increase by 2 and 1/4 percent for 1920, 2.75 percent for 2021, and then 2.75 percent again for 2122. I will say this, the 2.25 percent is the last year of our contract with Minnesota Central, so we know that percentage to be exact. We assume that 15 retirees will happen at the end of this year, and the difference between what we're paying for that staff to leave and, or their current salary, and a new staff to be hired, which is, you presume it's going to be less, we're assuming that the difference between those is $25,000 per person. And then we set aside money for severance, and we're making adjustments there, 495,000 in 1920, 400,000 in 2021, and then 227,000 in 2122. This is back, hmm, almost two decades ago, to do OPEB and do different things. You had to sunset payments, and so we're slowly expiring the people that are eligible for a severance payment when they retire from the district. So eventually, this will not be a payment for us. And then we're assuming 4 and 1/2 percent increase in utilities, 5 percent increase in property and liability insurance, and 2 percent increase in workers' compensation each year. And the final assumption was supplies and materials will increase by 2 percent. This was removed by board action December 21st, and so it was also moved from the projection model, because we know that to be true again, at least, well, at least for what the information that's presented to you. Moving on to the next page. So now when you're looking, and I forgot my cheat sheet of numbers, of course, when you're looking at, okay, where does that leave us, Kristin? In absence of any board action, so let's just pretend the board didn't do anything in December, what is the difference between 4.48927, which is what, essentially $4.5 million, which is what we're projecting our unassigned ending fund balance to be this year? And with the new assumptions and levy and budget, what do we believe the difference is? And you can see that's now believe we would end if you did nothing at 2.664. So you're talking about $1.8 million. So we were talking 2.5 when the conversation started, when we were using numbers from last year, and now we're down to 1.8. And essentially, the reasons are, we are, and again, there's nuances. You have, you have different, we have actual staff in as opposed to projected, but essentially, your big outliers are, we assumed a year ago that we would have a 1 and 1/2 percent increase in gen ed formula, now we're assuming 2. So when you go up half a percent, you are talking $500,000. We are assuming things we know. We currently now have a new cell tower in place, a new cell tower agreement going in at J.C. Fields. That was $26,000. We now own a bus garage, of which we will receive rental income, and we anticipate the net effect from the rental income less the operating expenses to be about $160,000. No, 140, excuse me.
Net, is that net?
Net, yeah. The rental income in and of itself is 200,000. And then we have the levy for OPEB. So where we were taking that out of the general fund before, we're now going to, we are now set up to levy for it. So those are some revenue components that help drop that number, or change that number. Again, if we didn't get 2 percent from the state of Minnesota, that alters it. But why is there a difference? That's why. When you look out to '21 and '22, you can see the trajectory if we didn't make changes. I would caution you to go to '23 and '24, because again, the committee doesn't even discuss it, because you're just so far out at that time that they're not reliable. So just assume you're looking at, you know, 19 is where we're at with the revised budget. You're looking at '20, '21, and '22. That's what we've discussed, and you can see where our trajectory is. I'll ask you to turn to the next page. And this is maybe a different way to look at it, it depends on your approach. When you look and say, "Okay, now we have a fund balance goal." And what would it take for us to get back up to the 5 percent? And right now, we're projecting to end this year at just, just better than $1.2 million below our goal. Like, if you were going to make adjustments to the budget, that would get us to goal. As you look at next year, again, in absence of any board changes, and we do have board changes, you'll see that in the next slide, we'd be looking at about $3 million to get to board goal. So if you, if the board did nothing, this is the trajectory of how you would carry on the difference between the board fund balance policy and where we actually lie. So it's just a different way to look at it. It's not talking about balancing your budget, it's talking about where would you need to be to get to your goal? Now, the following page, and I'm going to go past this one pretty quickly, but this is just a summary of the action that was taken by the board and approved on the 21st. And you can see that's $1.081 million. Just a reminder. The next page after that is the projection now, which is essentially the same projection of what you just saw, but with those changes. So currently, again, projected to be at 4.48 million. Now, with the adjustments and all of the new assumptions and factors that have come into play, we're saying we're at, we're going, we anticipate being around 3.75, which means your difference falls about, it falls in the range of about $750,000. So if you're looking to cut to balance your budget, there's about $750,000 that you have left to do that work. And again, you can see, once the adjustments were made, it helps the next, it helps in '21, and it also helps in '22 as you move forward. Those numbers aren't, aren't lower, because you stop the ongoing expenses and the compounding expenses, so those numbers adjust as well. And then the last slide, or the last graph part of the presentation, you can see, now this is where we're at, based on how far away from we, how far away are we from the board goal? And instead of $3 million, we're now at essentially $1.9 million. So Board Considerations, which is your very last page. When looking at these numbers, and essentially, you know, the focus then becomes the last two pages, are you, you can, you can do nothing moving forward and just spend on the fund balance. You can cut the $735,435 to balance. You can say, "Our revenues equal our expenses," and we're good with that. You can cut the 1 point and all round, the 1.19 million to meet your fund balance goal. Or you can do any, quite honestly, anything you choose. You can do a combination, you can pick a number in between, you can go greater than. If there's other initiatives, there's, you know, the possibilities of how you put this together are yours to determine, but just to provide you an update and then have the conversation on what that looks like going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a lot of work, but I think it helps. What I'd like to do, and if everybody's in agreement, is first of all, make sure we understand things on the slides. So maybe what we'll do is go to that first page, and I'll go around and see if any board members have questions on what you're looking at or interpretations. Then we'll go to page two, and we'll go through that way. And then, once we've done that, then we can open discussions in some of the questions that Kristin has phrased for us. So first of all, perhaps going to slide one. Are there any questions? Director?
Yeah. So when do we actually find out for sure what we do get from the state?
When the legislative session closes. I believe the date is May 23rd. And if they go, and some, I'm just, maybe through the years, have grown to be a bit cautious with using that date, because they tend to extend the session. So I would say the best estimate is the end of May, possibly the beginning of June.
Okay. Thank you.
And what I would say, Tina and I come out of a C meeting today, and we had a senator there and a representative there, it's in the Constitution, it's such a date, and what the legislature is in the habit of doing is using every minute of their time, so a lot of times, they settle in the wee hours. Other questions? Page one.
I do have a question on page one about Q Comp. If you can explain to me and any other board members about what that means, you said that we currently receive state aid, but we do not levy for that. Could you explain that?
Yes. So there is a, and it's slightly less than just because of the veto from Governor Dayton last year, but I'm going to use round numbers of what it, because people got reduced because budgets didn't get increased. But $260,000, $260 went into play when Q Comp went into play during the Palenti administration. They said you have $260 per, is it student or ADM, available to you to implement this program. Of that money, is it 161 or 169 is aid? But guess what? Your local community has to have some skin in the game, so then you have to, to do the levy, fine, we'll give you the aid, but you also have the ability to levy for the difference to get you up to that $260. So we do the aid piece, and we collect the 160 whatever on our students. We don't, as a district, and I want to say it's $69 per, for the levy, we don't collect that. We have an opportunity to. We, there was actually a considerable amount of discussion by the board last spring on whether we wanted to. It was the decision not to move forward with the levy piece. We will probably be having that conversation again this spring, but that's why I say there's a differentiation there.
And Kristin, if we decided to do that, that would be 69 times 8, 8,300 kids?
Yes, which is 570, 570,000.
Okay. And then, just so I can clarify, you said approximately, we initially used the number $260 per student. You said about $160?
I want to say it's 161 is aid, and then 69 is levy. Does that?
Was it 191?
191, and then 69, yes, that's it.
191.
Okay.
Just to clarify, that, that's not, when you, even if you levy or don't levy for it, that's not money that just goes into your general fund, right? It's part of an approved plan. It's not money that can be used to supplant something that's already going on. So it isn't, it's a different revenue stream to do different stuff, additional stuff. It's not a revenue stream to take the place of what you're spending on.
So it's not unassigned?
It's not unassigned dollars, so that, just to be clear about that.
Sometimes it bumps something.
Yeah. And thank you. And could you explain how it is currently being used? How those, those dollars are currently being employed?
Sure. Kathy can help me if I miss it, but we, the agreement that we have now funds a Q Comp lead teacher. It funds four instructional coaches. It funds, and those are considered steps or ladder, career ladder, parts to the plan, which is a requirement. And then there's an incentive piece based on a teacher's completion of our teacher evaluation and growth development process. And then there, the other part of it that gets paid is some committee work and professional development support. For example, our mentoring program and things of that nature.
So there are requirements that the district has to fulfill in order to obtain just the aid dollars, correct?
Correct. The plan, you become eligible for those dollars based upon MDE's acceptance of your Q Comp plan.
Which is, did you say already who it's put together by?
It gets put together by the Q Comp working group, so there's a Q Comp board that meets. And then, when it was initially put into place, that group meets and comes up with a plan that is agreeable both by the school board and the teachers' union.
So if the district decided they wanted to pass a non-voter-approved levy in this case, and they were going to do it for Q Comp, and they got money, which we said, 570,000 or so, that would go into Q Comp spending?
Correct.
And not into offset, say, the fund balance?
Correct.
Okay. Did that help?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Other questions on page one?
Yep. The literacy incentive aid of 430,000, is that something that we can get even if our reading scores decrease? How do you get that?
Yeah, again, it's, it's the scores with the growth component percentage in there. So I think if they, if they, if our growth didn't exist, my guess, it would be reflective then in the dollar amount that we actually received. So if, it's not just the scores, our score, I mean, I suppose you can't get all your scores to go down and then show a growth component, that's counterintuitive. But those are the two factors that come into play in the formula.
Okay.
It always strikes me as odd, and I hate to editorialize, that you get punished if your kids don't do well, as opposed to, the kids need more help.
Well, and I, you know, and I think if you were to look, and when this aid component came into play, I think it was, "We want you, the state of Minnesota wants to focus your efforts on reading, and we will reward you for it." And so their way of rewarding you is to show, "Here are our scores, here's growth, here are our scores, here's growth," and you're, that, as long as those efforts continue to be put into that, they will continue to give some form of compensation for it.
Thank you. List is?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions on page one?
I have a question. Yes, hi, thanks. Is the OPEB levy in this, listed in this revenue sheet anywhere?
The OPEB levy is reflective on the, on the totals, like when you get to the dollar amount, where that lies. The OPEB levy, as far as the assumption, does it adjust any of our assumptions moving forward? No. It's going, it's now included, and we're going to, in the next three years. Does that make sense, Sarah?
It is listed under expenditures on the second page.
No, no, that's the use of the trust.
The expenditures sheet just shows using, using funds out of the trust, but we levied for OPEB, the additional revenue that should be on this sheet.
Well, we're already, now, because of the discussion and the implementation of the levy this past year, we're now just assuming that carries forward. So it's built into the model, but it, we don't assume, the only, what the assumption would be is, "Dear committee, do you believe that the board will no longer levy for OPEB?" Then we would do a reduction of the dollar amount that we believe is going to be levied. Status quo is, we're, again, it's no changes in referendums. I would actually include, it's a verbiage, "There's no changes in referendum," and that levy, and those levies, like kind of the things that are in place will stay in place.
Okay, so you're saying it already existed before this adjustment right now? So it is not a change?
Correct, it currently exists.
Okay.
But I think, Director Stivlin, to your point, what she's saying is, if you, maybe the language of no change in referendums, we can put referendum slash levy, so that your OPEB piece is reflected.
Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you.
And it might say, "Not only levy, but OPEB."
Okay, this is my last one on this page, sorry.
You can have as many as you want.
The one says, "Decrease in compensatory revenue to 700,000 for each year." What was it previously?
Again, I believe we were falling somewhere between 725 and 750. I just saw a report that came out yesterday, and I'll be doggone if I can remember the dollar amount, but it was better than 700, but it was probably no more than 20,000 better than 700. So there might be, back to, okay, this was a point in time, that's what they assumed.
Thank you.
It might be a little different in actuality. It might be a little different in actuality.
And what, what is compensatory aid?
So compensatory aid is based off of your, essentially your free and reduced population. It's based off of your English language learners.
Okay.
I think that's it. Or that's basic. Compensatory is just the free and reduce. The basic skills is your, also your EL learners, but this is just essentially saying that in our free and reduced population or concentration, we typically run around 15%. And we're just saying, you know, we believe that our socioeconomic status probably isn't going to change that much.
So, and those dollars can be used in any way we wish? Or are they assigned?
They're assigned.
They're assigned. This is the same thing that's usually referred to as Title I funds?
No.
Basic skills.
Basic skills.
Basic skills.
And we use it, you know, it, there's, you know, you want to direct it towards the population of need, the ones that have been identified. Title I is, let's go this way, Mike. To expand on your statement not taken as a question, compensatory helps drive our Title I funding.
Got you. Okay.
Other questions on slide one? Can we turn the page? I remember reading this book, don't turn the page. Questions on that page, second page. Jennifer?
Just an easy one here. For clarification, the steps and lanes increase there. So that is not the entirety of the population that receives contracts. It's, so that does leave out those who do not acquire a separate lane in that contractual.
And if we could, just for sake of audience, non-educators, it's, tell them what steps and lanes are.
Sure. So in employee contracts, there is essentially a system designed, and again, it's not necessarily all contract, maybe it is in our district, that every contract has a step, step and lane increment. The lane is associated with educational components. So I started out and I have a BS degree and, or I'm a T, you know, and then I move on and now I have 15 more credits. And so there's, what's written into contracts is, there's essentially a system designed to acknowledge that you've continued on with education and have advanced your degree. Can go up to masters, can go up to masters plus so many credits, can go up to a PhD. So those are lanes. You're, you're, and usually that's only affiliated with a teacher's contract. Then the steps are, for each year of service, it might be each year of service, it might be defined differently in each contract, but for a year of service, you move to the next step. There's recognition in a longevity factor. You're not new anymore, you know what you're doing, you're going to get a slightly higher scale of pay, so you, you step through this until it caps. In some contracts, it's five stepping points. So you might get five years of advancing and then you're just held, that's the last step you can take, that's where you are. Teacher's contract has more steps, but nonetheless, eventually you will, you will, you will come to a point where there's no movement left. So when you're calculating, let's say we have an employee that makes, you know, $10,000 and next year they're going to make 12, just because they naturally, they're here another year. They take another step, they move down. Let's a $2,000 increase to what we, over what we're compensating them this year. For all employees in the district, the assumption is, and this is all employees, the assumption is that there will be, and again, we use 800,000 to a million dollars in, of expense of that movement that happens within our district in the general fund. That's just a natural movement.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, so is it safe to say that, is this all contracts, so our teachers as well as our custodial staff, for example? So then is it safe to make that next assumption that custodial staff probably enjoys less of the steps and lanes than teaching staff or no?
They don't have as many.
Okay.
Like I say, I want to say they're at five, maybe six.
Depending on the position in the custodial unit, there's one classification. Mike, one of the classifications has 11 steps and one of them has a base rate. So it depends on the position. Our other bargaining groups are mostly five.
Five.
And the teachers have 22.
Okay. Thank you.
Contracts, are there seven contracts that are up this year?
Uh, yes.
Approximately, because that tells you the scope of.
Yeah.
Other questions on this page, Mark?
Just one on, no, OPEB. There, there was a levy passed by the board in 2018. What, what is that amount? You, you said that, for in terms of dollars that's coming in, you said that we have a trust draw of?
One million.
$1 million per year. So now how much is that levy taking care of that?
Well, the total expense, and again, it varies depending on the year. We will, what will be before you in the next handful of months is a new actuarial study that tells you what they believe the trajectory is of those expenses. But I would say we have ranged between a million and a half to $2 million of total expense. Okay? Again, on any given year, as our population ages out, the people that were entitled to this benefit, eventually that will draw down. Again, it, what comes into play is not only, well, the calculations, what come into play is not only what we pay, but kind of what, having retirees on our plan, how much that adjusts our, our premium. Lot, again, of a lot of formulas that come into play. So back to the question of, let's assume in time, we've, we've gone between a million and a half and $2 million. And we've drawn different money from the trust that was issued a decade ago, and that trust was issued for just over 20 million. We've, you know, taken a million and a half, we've done different dollar amounts, but we've kind of held at a million dollars every year of taking from this trust, which means the general fund absorbs the difference, whether it's 500,000, 700,000, a million. With the levy, and I want to say the levy that we put into place on that line was 770-some-odd thousand. That's, if you go back and look at the levy presentation, you can see that. That levy will then support the difference. So this is just saying, this is what we're drawing down, drawing up from the trust, and the trust is going to expire soon, which means we're going to have a gap of a million dollars once that trust expires, whether we go for levy, you know, again, there's different mechanics that we can get there to cover, but there's going to be an expense that the, that the trust will no longer exist. So we have to figure out how to cover. This is addressing what's coming from the trust. The levy now addresses what once came from the general fund. So we look in the general fund like we're nothing, because we're using different mechanics to address it.
Got it.
When does the trust expire?
Depends on the use, depends on the interest rate. I want to say, again, if we're at 8 million, so next year we're at 7, if you just honestly, Liz, if you assume that, you know, we've got eight years starting now.
Okay.
That might be optimistic. There might be different things, but I've always kind of thought, boy, we can anticipate that trust expiring 23, 24. You, you definitely have to be, have a plan in place by then of how you're going to address that. We do have a few years left, though.
Thank you.
Other questions? Under projected retirees, and it says estimated 15, and then it's estimated cost, because typically, getting back to our steps and lanes, you're going to hire somebody less. The 25,000, does that represent the cost of a position? In other words, both salary and benefits, is that, that's what goes in there?
Uh, no, not, no. Because you're going, the assumption would be that the person that is retiring will still be taking benefits and there will still be some contribution. It would be more along the lines of, if you have a current teacher that's making $65,000, we'll probably hire a new teacher, replace them at 40.
Okay. So it really is strictly salary?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Anything else on slide two? Do we get to turn the page again? And this is the projected fund, unassigned fund balance. Questions on this page?
I have one question. So you said the number remaining is 1.8 million after, is that between, that's between what we will be at the end of 2019 and the end of 2020? Not to get us all the way back, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Turn the page again, please, and we're on slide four, page four. And our, our goal of what we're seeking to attain according to our policy is 5%. And so that's what this represents, how much typically we'd have to make up. Is, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
And our last levy year is 2022, right? That's the, well, that's last year we'll receive funds on the levy.
For the operating, yes. And that's why it's not reflective, we're, because this, we only did it out to 22. If I were, now, next year, when I'm in front of you doing this, then it's going to be honestly a committee conversation and probably a school board conversation of, is that a fair assumption?
And remember that slide four doesn't reflect any of the things that you did on the 21st as far as approving.
Any other questions on slide four, page four? Turn the page again. And we have the second item on our agenda, and that's approved reductions. Any questions on anything that's listed there?
Does, if we approve, oh, you're saying these are approved reductions? You're going to say we have to do everything?
Correct.
So if we want to add to or change anything, is that an option today?
You can have the discussion today, but obviously the decision would have to be at a school board meeting. But yes, that's correct, and that's kind of the last page about what your next steps are. I think the board needs to decide, where do we want to land? And then we can figure out the best way to get there.
I, I do have a question about the, the first line, the, the first entry where it says, reduce professional development and curriculum budgets by $250,000 each. We do have a requirement, a state requirement of 2%, right, of our, the state aid has to be assigned towards professional development. How, how does this reduction impact that requirement that we have?
I think, correction, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is 2% of the budget or is it 2% of what the state gives us?
2% gen ed aid is the requirement, which is, which falls between a million and a million point one dollars, depending on our kids and all of that. But assume one point, about 1.1 million is what we're required to use of our gen ed aid for PD.
Which we do.
Which we do. We actually use far beyond that, and so that's when, I'll let Bob piggyback into that.
I think that's what your question is.
It won't impact it.
Well, it will, I mean, it'll.
It won't impact the requirement.
The question was, does it impact the 2%? Does not impact the 2%?
Because we easily meet the 2%.
It's a trust for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions on this page? If not, let's go to page six.
Just, not a question, but just, when I first looked at this, I thought it looks exactly the same. But it's because we stretched out the numbers, so, just so everybody recognizes that. It's better, but doesn't quite get us there yet.
I have a question about this. Can you guys hear me okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, good. Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, Shelley. I'm glad you said that, because it's a different scale on the side. So the two, the two lines from the one from before, and this one looked the same, but this one supposedly, it's supposed to look better. But can you just clarify, Kristin, is, is this sort of dire depiction essentially trying to show that if we don't do, if we don't have a balanced budget, this is what an unbalanced budget would do, compounding over time? Is that the main thing that this is showing? Because it looks really awful, but, I mean, I think you said this earlier, we shouldn't really look at this so far out into the future.
Right. I'd, I'd strongly advise that you don't look past 22, to be honest with you. That said, when you look at it, it, this model, and again, I can, I can update and keep providing as often as you would like, that what this does is, this just shows, if, if you, and again, choose what you want to do, if you were to not balance your budget, this is kind of the course you're on, right? This is what you're going to continue to look like. Should you balance your budget, or the closer you get to balancing the budget, obviously the years as you move out, because you, you know, you're right, it's a compounding thing. The more action you take upfront, it saves different action as you move down the road. Yes.
Okay.
And I, I think the challenge also, Sarah, to your question, is on a eight and a half by 11 piece of paper, when you try to put the data points, for the first one, without any board action, which you've already taken some, it does dive pretty quickly. And so I appreciate what you say about it's difficult to kind of have those exactly the same unless we maybe would use a larger graph or something for you. It's accurate.
Yeah. Yes, exactly.
Kristin, if I may. First of all, fund balance is sort of our savings account. What I'm after here at this point, if you would talk to, and other people can add to that or not, is that our goal is a 5% fund balance. If we don't meet that, what are the ramifications? And why do you have a fund balance in the first place? Kind of those questions, kind of a pro and con.
Sure. I, as far as what are the ramifications, you're your own police on policy. If you haven't met your policy and you say, we're okay with not meeting our policy, then that's by all means your choice to make. The kind of untold or unseen ramifications are, one would be, should we be issuing debt or going out, we need to do something, we need to do a project. Our rating, because you get, you know, the better your credit score is, your personal credit score, the better interest rates you get. That, that same rules, those rules apply to school districts as well. So the farther away you are from kind of the cost of operation and how you're able to meet that, is your credit score. And if we had to take out debt for any reason, back in the day, we used to have to issue certificates just to operate, because the state wasn't funding us, and it was a timing thing. That's going to affect your interest rates, which ultimately could have a longer-term financial consequence for you. That's one of the implications. Another one is, is as far as the fund balance goes, and there's been lots of conversations since I've been in the district about fund balance and what that goal should be, it is your rainy day fund. The fund balance shouldn't, and I'm merely speaking from my opinion, it, it's a savings account, but we're not a bank, right? We're not here to withhold anything that we can provide to students, just so we have money in an account. That said, things happen. You, in the event you have a, a dip in a year, you, you want to do some programming, it levels out kind of the anticipation of what we get from the state. So maybe we were thinking we would get 2%, we got nothing. Okay, we have fund balance there that can help support maybe the adjustments we didn't make, because we thought it would look different. It levels out the, the, the peaks and the valleys of school funding, state funding, levying, all of that comes into play and helps you, so it's not, we're going to cut this much this year, we don't have anything, and oh my gosh, now we're going to add, because we just got federal money and let's add, and then the following year, we're going to have to cut 3 million. That's not great for a school district to have those peaks and valleys. You want, you know, your staff to feel comfortable, you want your parents to feel comfortable, you certainly want to set a standard for your students. And so that, to me, is kind of where the fund balance comes in, is to, to levy or to plateau out those peaks and valleys and provide you opportunity, not put you in a precarious financial position as it relates to potential interest costs and different things moving forward.
And, and part of it as well is cash flow.
It is.
And if you're short on cash flow, then you go, got to go out in the market and borrow. And there is a cost to borrowing.
Yes.
And part of it, you really touched on already, and that's kind of a rainy day for the unforeseen issues that might or might not. for the unforeseen issues that might or might not occur.
Unfortunately, there's a large part of our funding that we, we, we don't control, we just don't control. So you have to plan accordingly without, and my recommendation would be, obviously, you don't want 20% sitting in fund balance too, because you have opportunities to do things that you're not doing, if that's the case.
It's interesting, because schools vary on this. Sarah and I know, because we were talking to a fellow board member at a school district that will not be known, and we asked her what her fund balance was, and she didn't know, but she said, I'll find out and let you know. Well, I was at 916 last night, and she told me. By most people's reckoning, it was huge. And then you go into precisely what you talk about, and that is, some people will go to the point and then say, well, why are you functioning as a bank then, if you don't need that money, and it was a huge amount?
Well, and each district presents their own, you know, their own situations, too. I go back to my, my former district, and that district very much relied on open enrollment. Well, if something were to happen, whether it be legislatively or with a decision that we're not gonna have open enrollment, you're gonna need 20%. I mean, different, different school districts present reasons why their fund balance might look different. I'm just speaking holistically, and certainly a specific, we're here for Stillwater, why we do what we do, or at least what I've seen so far.
Let me ask you a question, or, I'm sorry, last one. Your colleagues, other school districts, is 5% typical, is 10% typical?
It's closer to 10.
Yeah.
We're, we're pretty, our, our experiences, or our, our policy is pretty low compared to my colleagues.
Yeah. 916's budget is, or fund balance is much higher, it's about 12%. But there's one key difference, they cannot levy if they run short, we have that power.
Well, and precisely to my point, there's reasons why in each individual district it can look differently, because different things come into play.
Thank you. Other questions?
One thing I'd like to point out, because the natural inclination is to say, if you were to look at the chart with the blue and the difference in your, to get to board goal.
Page seven.
Well, it's page seven and page, and page four. You're going to look and say, well, Kristin, you know, we, this says 3 million to get to board goal in 2020, and once we, we made 1.8 million, 81 million dollars in cuts, why isn't that not the exact difference? Because intuitively, you want to believe that it should be. 5% goal is based off of 5% of expenditures, and so as soon as you make adjustments and your expenditures change, that 5% changes. So you're not going to see, you will see a direct correlation of the 1.081 million on the other graph, but you won't see it when you're looking at the 5% fund balance, and that's why.
Other thoughts, comments? If not, let's turn the page, and that's, next steps or, or board considerations? Your thoughts?
I think we need to continue to cut the, to cut. I'm sorry.
Again, we remind the chair and others, try to speak to the microphone if you would, thank you, listen. Other comments anybody else wishes to make? Shelley?
I, I agree, I, and I really want us to work to get back to that 5%, whether it's in one year, it takes us a little longer, I'm not comfortable with being under that red line at all.
And I think one thing that does show up here, is that if you don't meet it this year, and then the following year, that it compounds itself, and it actually becomes more difficult. Any dissent or questions or other commentary people want to make? All right? So collectively, how do we get there? Thoughts?
Well, sorry. Some of the documents that we got recently talked about the increase in administrative costs over the last four years. The first document, I think we got at the first finance meeting, which showed changes in director level staffing, for a total increase in salary and benefits of 673,101. And then I had asked for changes in coordinator positions, it had some other titles too, and then the information that I got showed, in the last four years, that increased 752,820. So I think one of the ways that we could save money is, I know that the previous board voted for restructuring and admin, about 200,000, but I think we could easily, because the total of those two is 1,425,921 in four years, and I think we could add to that. So I think we could add to about 750,000.
So if I hear you.
Sit to 750,000.
So if I hear you correctly, and I think that's kind of what our process is, is what you're saying is to look, if we're making a list for consideration.
Right.
And that may be, you're asking us to look more deeply at administration supervisors and directors?
Yes.
Other comments, Jennifer?
So, yeah, I, I know this has come up multiple times, so can you speak a little bit more to that, the impact of that, what that would look like?
Kathy, do you want to respond to, you know, I think?
This one?
Yeah.
Tia, would you pass that around?
This is, this is just a hard copy of what we sent to you electronically, so it's not a different, it's what you've got, gotten previously.
Yeah. So the line item in the budget that we were working from was the coordinator supervisor, specialist, and tech support. So that's a combination of all of those groups, not just coordinators and supervisors.
Right.
So those positions where you see the increases is all of those positions. In the document that I sent last night electronically, if you look at the highlighting, that's, you had asked, where's the difference in the 11 positions, which is the net of those three years, the increases and decreases.
Right.
If you look at the different positions, for example, if you follow the blue, the majority of those positions are not increases in coordinators, those are almost all clerical support type positions. There are a few coordinators, you'll see on the second page, we've got three that are community ed coordinator level positions, which come out of a different budget, so that's not impacting your general fund. On the third page, you have a, you'll see that there's a health services supervisor that is a supervisor position, and then we've got a coordinator of transportation, which is a coordinator level. And then the Melinda Fiera, which is the coordinator of assessment, that is a coordinator position. The rest of them are not coordinator positions.
And I, and, and, you know, not to micromanage, because that's not the job of the board, but just because if you look at the increase in four years of, no matter what the positions are, but because the increase in four years was so large, was 1.4 million dollars, and if you go through some of the salaries individually, the largest one, one individual had a salary increase in four years of 43%. And if you go through, I mean, some of them are rather large. So because that happened, and it didn't seem like, because of where we are right now, we don't have the money for that to be, it's not a luxury we can afford, it seems like that's an obvious place to look for cuts.
Keep in mind, as you'll see in both of the charts that we provided, though, a majority of those costs are board approved, the contract parameters and the increases that were given through contracts.
Right.
So that's where the majority of those increases came in.
Right. But they did come in, and so.
Correct.
I mean, that's the thing, is that, you know, if I have a budget in my house, and I've done something that later it looks like I can't afford, I have to cut somewhere. So I'm just saying that looks like a logical place for me.
Shelley, I think.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, no, I, well, I just had a procedural question, which we can talk about, if we're, if we could just start with the list of considerations for today, and then bring it back, or if we want to have a discussion about each thing as we go, but it might be more fruitful to list out what we'd like more information on, and then.
Where we want to concentrate our conversation on, rather than go through those events individually, and then you go to another, is to come up with a list of what we want to push further or talk about further, maybe we'll do that first, see how big that list gets, and then after we've done that, decide if we want to pursue that today, or go back to the administration for further consideration.
I think one of the things, too, that you'll want to consider, and I certainly appreciate what you're saying, Director Weisberg, about the, what seems to be an increase for administration, I would just like to, if you, I think one of the first decisions that you need to make, and obviously you need to have a conversation with us at a board table, make the final decision, but we need to have a ballpark of where you want to be. If you want the full, if you don't want to use the fund balance, AKA savings, for any of these pieces, if we go to the 1.8?
Eight.
Million, it will require you to look at programs, it will require you to look at gifted and talented, and EL, and music, and all the things we do, because you won't have enough money to get, you'll maybe be able to get to about 800,000, but that extra million, you are going to have to have conversations about programming.
Mark? Well, I, my question was just, back to the board approved contract, could, could you explain a little bit what that means, that the increases have been the result of board approved contract measures?
Sure, those are as a result, well, there's a couple things, so when you see the director on the board meeting earlier in the year, in December, that one included, when Denise came on board, the board approved 200,000, and then when Tom Nelson was here, there were additional reductions that were made to pay for the restructure and the addition of those administration. On top of that, then, you have the board contract parameters that were set when, in the closed sessions, where the board said, here's your parameters for negotiations. So those dollars are the numbers that came from the base costings when we did those rounds of negotiations.
Shelley?
So that's maybe where I need more clarification, because I think we approved what, whatever it was, one and a half percent, or whatever. So I don't know if it's a combination, we talked about this a little bit before, if it's a combination of the one and a half percent, and the getting to average, and something else, because the percentages, you know, when we see these percentages, it is confusing why, it seems like it's jumped a lot, so we might need more clarification around.
Sure. I think the, the bigger year, part of the problem, or the, the result that we have is, if you remember, not this past contract, but the contract before, the first year of the contract, we got everyone to average of the salary comparisons of our seven comparison districts. There was, that was a year where we had to take some big jumps to get people to the averages. So that may be why this one looks large, because that, that year, we had several positions that were way out of alignment with comparison, and we, we made some big adjustments that I think I reported to the board, some of them were 13% to get there. And then the second round, we did do one and a half percent on all the contracts, so that's what the parameters.
And Kathy, it would seem, and correct me, if I error, I think part of the issue here is, those contracts have been negotiated, and they run out. So you really cannot, at this point, reduce those contracted amounts. What you can do, and that's, whether you want to do it or not, that's another issue, you can reduce the number of positions, but then somewhere along the line, if you do the latter, people have to assume additional responsibilities, or you cut certain things that you're doing right now. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, and I think there's, there's different ways, so if the board is saying you want to cut 750,000, what we would then have to do is go back and decide how do we address those. For example, you could have somebody that works, instead of eight hours a day, works six hours a day, and that would reduce salaries. So there's different ways of getting to that number once we know that, and where can we make adjustments or changes across different areas, for example, where we might combine two people's duties into one, and get rid of one, to try to cover two areas with one person. So those are the kinds of changes we would look at to try to adjust.
And possibly going on, and you may not want to do that, that's a collective board decision, perhaps in areas where across the board, you said, everybody's gonna get a 2% raise, or everybody's gonna get a 1% raise, or whatever the variance was, another approach that could be taken is, this group is gonna get 2%, and other group's gonna get less than that because, and whatever that because turns out to be. But I, I think what both Kathy and I are doing is to tell you what your options are. Tina?
I think I would like to explore, not saying I want to go there, but just for knowledge coming into it. About a year ago, I asked for a list of programs we do, and to see how much they cost, maybe what's allocated to them, and what their spend actually is, if we could just get a list to, to see what we have, and whether, you know, just to start getting knowledge as to, to what we're actually doing. And then there was a second part, I was going through the info that I requested a little bit, and traveling conference and mileage reimbursements are really, really high, we seem to utilize that a lot. What do we have, is that within a contract that we have to pay, what do we pay for mileage reimbursement? And then, I guess, let's start there.
The IRS declared is what we pay for mileage. So it just went up to 58 now this year.
Okay. Now, is that something we have to pay 58, can we pay less?
No, but we could ask for less, I mean, we could look at less traveling, but a lot of it is our specialists, things like that.
There was a lot of, there's a lot of traveling, there's a lot of out of state conferences, a lot of out of state conferences, and I think maybe we need to, or if we could, maybe look at slowing that down a little bit, until we, not saying forever, but just until we get things in order.
The one thing I think, though, that's important to do, and Kristin can do this as well, but you need to separate, traveling to conferences is different than when you're paying or reimbursing people for mileage.
Yeah, I think.
I think there'd be very few schools around that don't reimburse people for mileage. Traveling to conferences, there's a lot more of their own.
And the only thing that I would say to that is, and we can, we've already cut back on tons and tons of travel that people were doing and going to this year, but the other important piece of that is to understand that all, any of that travel was within the bounds of what was budgeted for that.
Mm-hmm.
So it wasn't above and beyond what was budgeted, it all took place inside of that sandbox, and so even by reducing it, it really, it really has to be a decision more like what happened a couple board meetings ago, where we say professional development isn't gonna, its budget isn't gonna be this much, and so then we have to look at reallocating, what are we gonna spend that amount on?
And that was my question, too, is if any of this money came out of what we've already reduced, the traveling, a couple of meetings back, you cut professional development.
That would come out of that budget, I mean, that money would be part of that.
Or next year.
Yes.
For next year.
Yep.
So just for clarification, the reimbursement for mileage is something that we don't have any choice, it's IRS rules and regulations, you can't ask staff to move between buildings and, and not pay for their mileage for that. And the second piece that you touched on a little bit is, some of our contracts do have that staff are allowed to go to a professional, a national conference, and those are typically not in Minnesota.
Contract.
Because of our, that's in their contract.
Okay. So there's things we can look at later? You can.
And I, I guess I would, I would tend to agree with the approach of that Director Weisberg said, that if we can come to an understanding, we have to grapple with these very challenging issues of cutting the budget, but if we can come to a figure that the board can agree upon, then, then the hard job is left to the administration as to how to implement that dollar figure.
Right.
So whether that is conferences, or something else that they're, they're looking at, I would, I would tend to prefer, from a board perspective, to say, this is an area we see where we want cuts to be made. Now, you figure out the hard part, which is.
Well, I agree.
How to make that happen.
I agree.
Shelley?
So do we, would it be better for us then to talk about an amount, and then give that back to admin? So do we, would it be better for us then to talk about an amount and then give that back to admin?
Yes.
So do you want to start a number?
Yeah, but, but what I hear you say, and perhaps we could add that to our list, our list to be talked about, is out-of-state conventions or conferences would be added to the list?
And I, I, all of those things are great ideas. I would just, when you start looking at this, you'll see that that, that's not, when you're looking at 1.8 million dollars, that's not going to get you near enough where you need to be. So the, the conversation, when we bring back, you will need to dig back into those program pieces, because you won't find enough of the small little pockets that seem easy to cut. So just remember that.
Some might call it the Lohein fruit.
We are very, yeah, getting.
That's been picked.
Sarah's looking too.
Yeah, hi. So a couple of thoughts I've had. I remember a meeting before I came onto the board, January of 2016, where there was a 11, approximately 11 million dollars surplus in the budget. And I remember the board at that time had a conversation about what they wanted to do with those extra funds. And I think some increases in technology and some increases of staff at the high school were implemented at that time to reduce class sizes. But that was in January of 2016, so not very long ago. And here we find ourselves in a much different situation. And I guess one of the things that's been kind of gnawing at me for a while is, you know, what has changed between since then and now? What kinds of programs or initiatives have we implemented between, you know, that, that period of time? And maybe those are the things that we need to be looking at to see if those are things that we can maybe freeze or put on hold, or are they working? But the other piece of this for me is just, you know, it's just clear the board really hasn't had that big of a role in developing these budgets in the past. And we've had a bunch of budgets in a row that were deficit spending. I think as a board collectively, I, I'm speaking for myself, but I think everyone else is, is similar thought, that we're not comfortable with deficit budgets. And I, I'm sensing from other people's comments that we really do want to get back up to this 5% fund balance. We want to be responsible with our finances. We need to get back up to that policy level of 5%. And we need to keep holding the line on not having any deficit budgets. You know, I just think that's what we need to do. So it, I'm looking at this last sheet, this presentation. I mean, spending down the fund balance, and at least in my opinion, that's not an option. Cutting it just by 735, that's not an option. So I think, at least for me, I think we need to dig in and figure out how we're going to get to that, to that additional, a level of cuts.
So I can, so Sarah, for your question, I think there are a couple of things that we have shared with the board. What has changed? We were pretty clear 16, 18 months ago that what's changed is the contracts. And when we went in, we had shared and reminded the board that with the grade configuration, with all of the new opportunities we're offering our students, the middle school model, moving the high school up to ninth, the ninth grade up to the high school, those had costs for extra staff to be able to deliver those models. Staff at the middle school for the wraparound team concept, the whole ninth grade pony team was another cost. And then the extra cost of transportation, just to get those students all there, $750,000. Those are all accurate. We have the numbers to show that. So the changes, what's changed are our costs, and some of them, they, this isn't a surprise. And I, I hope we can get past that, because what we've been doing the past 18 months is trying to give the board lots of information on school finance, so, because we knew this time was coming. Those grade configurations, the mental health, student advocates, all of those pieces that we've supplied for our students are really good things for kids, but they do cost. And so I guess my perspective is a little bit more about how do we do the least damage? Because you're going to find that the 1.8 million will get you down to very basics where the things that have been built the last three years without deficit spending, we haven't been deficit spending the last three years before we made the contract changes. That will really impact kids.
Not true.
Well, it, it is true.
The, every budget that I have seen since I came on the board was not a balanced budget. Every single one, well, two preliminaries and two revised.
So that has been, you came on the board in January of 2016.
January.
Right, right, January 2017. And it was that spring that we shared about the changes. So one of the things, remember, is that the savings or the reappropriation of the money from the consolidated schools, that first year, we, you know, we, we kept the schools in session one more year. So we didn't start that reallocation of that money to the secondary, or not the secondary, but the grade configuration until after that. So I think, you know, we can argue how we got here, where we got here. We have maybe different perspectives on that, but we are where we are. So I agree, we're trying as hard as we can as administration to help you see future and look ahead. But the big question is, how deep do you want to go?
Okay, Shelley?
Yeah, I hope we can lay that to rest, because we've shared before that we have different perspectives. Just when we made that decision to do contracts, the assumption for me, and I've said it before, because we say we shouldn't be surprised, but my assumption was that we would be brought a balanced budget then, where the admin would have looked at, how do we adjust for that contract? So I think there's some, just maybe misunderstanding that we walked in knowing that this was going to happen, but that, for me, wasn't the truth. We made the decision on contracts to pay our staff, which is wise. And then my assumption was that we would be brought the budget that was balanced then. So I think it's not, it, it feels sometimes like, well, you intentionally made that decision knowing what it was going to do, and then you act surprised. My surprise is that we weren't brought the, then, an adjusted budget after voting for the contracts.
I just want to go on the record to say, and it's already on the record, that I sat in that meeting with a couple of you and told you, if we continue to go down the road we're going down, we're going to be at a crossroads. That's almost the exact verbiage I used in that meeting. And so yes, to put it at rest, would love to, because it really doesn't matter at this point. The fact is, we are where we are. And the reason that we are where we are is because whether it's contracts, or it's programming, or it's new stuff that we did. That's what, all combined, it's got us in this spot, where we got to figure out, how do we retool this thing so that we can get back on track? I would, I would simply make the argument that if nothing else, the contracts, all of them, was the last piece of this pie that put us over the edge. It just is. It's the, it's an inflationary piece, right? It happens every year. It goes up. And so I would agree, it doesn't do us any good to go back and forth about any of that. But we did have the conversation, and then, you know, unfortunately, those are closed sessions at the time, and everybody can hear them until they're done. But we had them, and it's one piece of the additional costs. And like Superintendent Pontrelli shared, just adding the PAC Center, which is a great thing, moving that middle school, which we talked at length about, we knew was going to be more money to do that. The transportation, we knew that that was going to be more money. All that stuff simply adds up. And it, it's kind of like Director Weisberg said, we get to that spot, like in your household budget, where you go, okay, we've done this, we've got some really cool things, but now we've, we've got to pare the whole pie back a little bit. It can't just be one area, because the, the cautionary thing I would say as we look through this that, that you really have to grapple with is, it isn't just a singular program. It isn't just your administration, because it all works together. I mean, you, you can't, we can't be at a spot where we're just going to decimate this area and make, and not, not anticipate that it's going to have impacts in other areas. We're going to have to make sure that we, we're very thoughtful about what we, what we cut back on.
Thank you. So to be honest, I, I think every person at the table has made a valid comment. And I, I am actually an advocate of, of dipping, as much as I don't want to do that, dipping into the fund balance, and here's why. Because we have been in a cycle for years and years and years where we, we get excited about a program, we implement it not all the way. Q Comp is, is a shining example of that. And it's not quite, quite what we wanted it to be. It's not quite what it needs to be, because we have to try to be some sort of fiscally conscious about it. And then it doesn't perform the way it could perform. It doesn't become robust enough, and now we cut it, and now it goes away. And that is unacceptable. We have been doing this for years and years and years. And I would like to challenge the rest of my board members, as well as myself, to stop thinking about the tiki-tacky little things. Think bigger picture, 20,000-foot level. On a macro level, what are we doing wrong? And what can we do better?
I would like to go back to what Bob said when he said that the contractor, what, not what maybe caused it, but was the tipping point, because a lot of the teachers that I've talked to are very upset that they basically keep getting blamed for the deficit that we're in. And several people in the last meeting were, watch the tape, watch the tape, who voted, who didn't vote. And I think that they deserved that raise, and that to continue to put them in the position where you're basically saying, it's your fault we're in this deficit, is unfair.
I guess my only comment is, I, I don't think that anybody is placing all the blame on.
That's how a lot of them feel.
And, and it's unfortunate that they feel that way. We're, we're all in this together, and so I think we just have to be as creative as we can to, to address the, the challenge that we have.
One of the things I would say, and I've talked about this before, and again, this goes back a little bit in time. Sometimes there are structural things that occur that affect you years after. Like for example, and I've been on the board 10 years, so I'm saying structurally, 2007, I think everybody knows that we had a recession. And one of the good things, if there's good things that come out of a recession, is that part of the presidential attack on that was to supply money to schools, get people back to work, get spending, and all of those multiplier effects. But not only to pump more money into schools, but at the same time, to do things that were worthwhile. And so at that particular time period, one of the things that happened with the stimulus money that we got, the good news is we got things like student advocates. We got things like reading interventionists. We got things like math interventionists. The student advocates could be school psychologists, or they could be guidance counselors, or, or they could be social workers. Now, play that out. For three years, you got that additional stimulus. Okay, the period of time ends, the funds run out. At the end of that, the question becomes, okay, the money's not coming in anymore. So what are we going to do? What you can do is to say, well, it's simple. We're going to just go back, we're going to get rid of student advocates, we're going to get rid of guidance counselors, and all of those wonderful services. In the meanwhile, parents, kids, teachers, others, see the benefits of a lot of those programs. And so as a result, what's always tough for administrative staff is, what do we keep now and what don't we keep? But what it does do is it puts you behind. And no matter what you do, and it, the hard part on, on education, a lot of times, and new teachers come in or new administrators come in, people come into what's already a moving train. And they remember the block they experienced. I'm saying that's one example, without blaming anybody, that you say these kinds of things occur structurally. But in terms of feeling, oftentimes, when I was a teacher and I was in a classroom for 18 years, I was concentrating on what I was doing with my kids and my lessons in that tomorrow. I could tell you when staff members were laid off or that sort of thing. I didn't always know why, but realized there are some problems. One of the things, part of our structure too, and it's, people say, well, they ever go away? Are we ever going to have the good times? Every two years, we have elections. Members of the, each house come and go. The governor's office changes. School board members, there's an election every two years. And so what happens in all of that is there's some juggling and until you establish a new equilibrium. And I'm saying that's part of what we're going on. But I also like, and I think that's where we, we may want to concentrate our efforts. And I would prefer, what are we going to do now versus, yeah, but you didn't do this, or you didn't do that?
I just have, oh, sorry. Just kind of quick throw this out. Would it be possible for us to say as a board, you know, we want to cut, we want to ask every department to cut like 1% or whatever out of their own sort of? I, I'm not even sure how the budget gets developed. I mean, I assume there are departments that, department heads who kind of decide, you know, where all the spending is going to go within their department? I mean, can't we just say across the board, we need to do 1% cut? I mean, is that unreasonable? Can somebody speak to that a little bit?
I can speak to it, Sarah.
Okay.
Oop, I need feedback. So if you were to look in, define a department, so if you were to say, you know, just take a percentage, I would say, you know, when you look at, let's just say a building or an, like, the elementary principals, they each have their site, and if you say 1%, now you have staffing involved, and you have section sizes involved, and you have things that they don't control. The board determination on how that plays out is, is controlled. So now it becomes more finite. Now it, it becomes, okay, they really can't control their, their building supply budget, which has already been adjusted, and their capital budget, which has already been adjusted. It's kind of what they control. Now, do they have an opportunity, maybe, and there's still a design setup as far as, well, it's staffing allocation, whether it's licensed staff like teachers, or it's staffing allocation when you look at clerical support or what have you. That gets changed at a different level. Now, if you were to look and just say, you know, Kristen, adjust your finance, or adjust your operations, yes, that's already been in play. We've actually adjusted more than that. So part of it, part of it depends on the, the ability of that department to be able just to unilaterally make that decision. The other part is kind of to the disconnectedness of just those decisions. Like, they might, somebody might do something that actually impacts three other departments and, you know, I mean, it, you might lose some intentionality behind that. That would be my caution.
I guess I was just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no. Can, can you say, you know, this, this, and this, go back and, but, but again, then I would say, it, it might be more advantageous, again, back to give a number and have us figure out how that looks, because we kind of know how the, the, where the chains are in the spider web and what the impact of that is going to be.
Right, right. I, I think, I was thinking about something Mark, or Director Burns had said before, and also I think Director Moe and Kathy said earlier. You know, kind of thinking about it that way. I don't know. Thank you for clarifying that.
Director?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair Potajek. I wanted to speak to your comment about the teacher contracts, because I actually agree with you in that very much, in that when we were in those meetings, I, I, I think it all, I do think we have to look at the past, actually, to fix, to do better in the future. And when we were in those meetings, and Bob specifically and explicitly said, we will have to make cuts, at the time, I, I didn't know what that looked like, and I, Director Sibyl and I have talked about this quite a bit. And I guess I just think we're in such a, again, this is why I think, because we got us in this spot, I do not want to cut programs, especially not the instructional coach component. And I think we need to, as we move forward, forward-thinking now, how does our budget and our budget decisions, how may or may that not, or may that impact things like contracts? Contracts are the biggest ticket item, and I agree that I absolutely loathe the idea that we're placing everything on that. The reality is- The reality is that is the biggest dollar amount that we have to work with. So I think we need to have some, you know, high-level conversations about our process going forward.
So should we, at this point, like, I'm sorry, Director Potajek, say, this is an amount we want for this category, this is an amount we want for this category, and then go from there? Or what do we do?
I guess, I would still like to see information. I mean, I don't know the answers. I'm still learning. As I met with Denise yesterday, I kind of elaborated, I'm extremely detail-oriented, and I like the weeds. So for me, to fully understand what we're getting into, I kind of need to understand what's underneath it a little bit.
Director Pearson?
So is my understanding, once we have a kind of amount ballpark figure, that you would bring us a list similar to the last list that we had where it would have amounts and whether it's programming or whatever it is, it would be a similar process?
Other thoughts? Director Burns?
My only one thought is, do we, I know that the board in 2018 had a list that it was working from. Do we continue to look at that list any longer? Question.
So that's another possibility, reexamine the list or go back. Directors, Stivlin? Any comments?
I think we need, maybe we can go back and review the list that we had from before, but I feel like we need to, new ideas as well. I feel like we did already review a lot of what was on that list and either immediately took them off the table, or at least, you know, put them way down on the list, and so that's why we haven't already cut them. To Director Pelletier's comments, I agree. I think that, I mean, we've said all along that we don't want to cut anything that would be very close to students' hearts and, you know, that would impact direct student experiences. So music, at least for me personally, anything music is off the table. And tech is off the table. Anything that enhances the quality of learning experiences for our students should be, you know, directly, where students are directly being impacted, you know, really should be off the table. So that means going back a step and looking at, you know, some of the other systems and things that we have in play. But, you know, yeah, I think there's, what I'm hearing from this table is, as a board, we need to know more about how all of these things are impacting learning. And maybe it is best for us to just come up with a number and say, okay, here's the number we want to get to. Let's figure this out. Make a new list.
I agree.
Here's, here's what I hear so far. And if I'm wrong, or if you want to resolve that issue first, and legitimately, so some of you have questioned it, and I think we started off that, is 5% still the target?
It is for me.
Me too.
Me too.
Is there anybody who that's not still the target?
The target right now for this specific moment in time? I mean, it's my personal goal, but I think we all collectively have gotten us to this spot, so I think we need to take care of the fund, take care of the situation with 5%, that being the overall goal going forward.
Okay. Shelley?
So I, I think piggybacking off of that, before, we started with the total number, and we only hit part of a number. So I think we'll answer that question ourselves, maybe once we're brought additional things and what we're willing to cut and not cut.
See, what I'm thinking of is this, is first of all, we all got to come from a similar place. And, and so whether we go back to the beginning list, and we go through, and any board member could do this, I'm suggesting this is one strategy. Anything that you want to revisit, including music, or including administration, or whatever it is, if you check under your name and say, "I want that part of the discussion," or "I want that, the list to go forward with." And we take it from that approach, and that becomes our next conversation when we reconvene. This is what's on the list. And we can set up a date today, and I lose track. It's Friday, so we take about two, three days. We set a deadline and say, "They'll give you a list, and anything that's on that list that you think should be on the discussion table, put a check next to it. And anything that's not on the list and, and you think should be, you're, you're able to write it in." And then the administration will look at the whole list, and that will become our next discussion, similar to this. But what we will need too is, and for some, and there's new members, and maybe it's revisited, we've got to have common numbers, common information. And I'm saying, and Sarah, and I'm not attacking that or anybody, if you've got a sacred cow, that's going to be part of the discussion. And if several do and say, you know, "I just don't think that should be on the table there," you'll have an opportunity to make your case. Does that seem like a workable?
I like, thank you. I like the idea in general, but I guess I'm wondering about, like, timing. So are you suggesting we do this at another meeting and then come to a vote with this going forward? Or what's the process that you're considering?
What I'm thinking is this, last time what we did is we had a list. We had questions on what that involved, or what was in there. And then we went line by line and said, where was there a majority that said, "Keep it on the list," and those who didn't. Shelley?
So I, I agree. But I think where the last list started was with administration. So I think that would be wise for it to start there, and we can add things to the list.
What I'm thinking...
But I don't think it should mostly come from...
No, but what I'm saying is this, if you've got a super list, and that's, you know, it's, okay, which list are you talking about? Because we've seen several. And you want it added to the list for consideration, then we might start off with a lesser list than the big, long one. But I'm, I can flex on that. Bob?
Couple things. One, what might be easier for us, if you want us to come up with a list, is to have an idea collectively as the board, what you don't want us to go look at. That said, Sarah, I appreciate the music, art, and tech, and the student experience, but with those things off the table, I'm not sure where we come up with $1.8 million. Because there isn't $1 million in administration to cut. We aren't going to get there that way. There isn't that much. And then, as we continue to look at things that are away from the classroom, the caution I would bring is, as we have these programs, to your point, it's one thing to have a program, it's also the stuff that's behind the scenes that's supporting the program. And if we cut all the supports of a program, we might as well not have the program. And the last thing that I would leave you with is, we're to that point where we're going to have to make some, some tough, and these are going to be heart-wrenching cuts if we're really going to try to get to the point where you've got that 5% balance. They just are. Because the student experience is given by personnel, and the personnel is the costliest thing in the student's experience.
And part of what I'd say is this, and we probably can't say this enough, even that original list we came up with for $1 million or a little bit over, there's some flesh there.
There is.
And, and anything additionally we're going to do, there's some flesh. The hope would be, in the long run, we get a better handle on things, and we're slower to add than we are to delete.
And it might be worthwhile to resurrect some of those things that were on that list as well, and have a further discussion about them. But, but tell us, you know, what are for sure? What are those things? Don't even go down the road of exploring this because we're not even going to entertain it. That would be helpful for us to know, because otherwise, we're going to bring you something that you're, you're not wanting to spend time on anyways.
Sarah, head.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm going to probably make a bunch of people frustrated right now, but, I mean, for me, instructional coaches is still on the table. I know we've gotten a lot of emails from a lot of really great devoted instructors in our district who support this program and think it is doing amazing things, and I don't doubt them for a second. To have instructional coaches, but it is also extraordinarily expensive. And I would like to continue having instructional coaches be something that we look at in some form. I, I had suggested at one time that we remove all instructional coaches. If we did that, it would be close to $1 million savings. I, that's just my point of view. I, I realize that everybody else has a lot of different point of views, and I'm flexible and, you know, I want to know more about what we might...
Can I just, I'll respond to the instructional coach thing. The instructional coaching money that's paid for out of the general fund, so it's paid for out of professional development dollars, which is the only thing that is relevant to this conversation, is $348,000. The rest of it is paid out of Q Comp, and it's paid out of achievement and integration, both categorical. We talked about that earlier today. So, so it isn't, if we cut instructional coaching, it isn't going to save the budget $1 million. My question is, to the instructional coaching conversation, is the board willing to say, "We don't want Program A," or, here's why I'm saying this, "We've cut $250,000 out of the professional development budget." There's still enough money in the professional development budget to cover $348,000 worth of instructional coaching. Again, the sandbox is there. We would look at retooling other professional development stuff, but could keep the instructional coaches. I think that's what's getting missed in the instructional coach conversation is, it's an expenditure out of the, it's an expenditure we are choosing to spend $348,000 out of our professional development allotment. The school board has already said, "Reduce your professional development by $250,000." We're doing that. If you say, "Get rid of instructional coaching," all you're saying is, "Reduce your professional development by another $350,000," is what you're telling us. That's, that's what gets complicated in that conversation, but we don't, we don't save $1 million.
Well, I think, I think the question is that, you know, what flexibilities would we, would the Q Comp board have in using their funds, their funding for instructional coaches? If those funds were used in a different way, then that would, that would be the other piece of it. Obviously, that would have to go through their process as well, if I understand correctly.
I guess my, my thought would...
Let me, let me just do this.
I was going to say, you might answer what...
Well, I just, I, I think that the, to me, the question to ask is, one about, if it's a question about instructional coaching, that's not really a budget question for this. You might as well just say, "Cut the professional development budget by $350,000 more." Right? Because this is that whole, to what level of weeds are we going to get in? If you're telling me as the administrator that we want you to cut even more out of professional development, then I needed to decide what programming we're going to run or not run out of professional development. Even if we cut 350, I would have enough left in the professional development budget to continue to run instructional coaches. If we, as an administrative team, said, "That is the most important thing we've got going. We're going to spend it on that, and we're going to do very, very little in other stuff." That's what we need to, I think, from the board, to decide, is are you telling us what to cut? Or are you telling us, "We got to cut this much, go figure it out?" Because those are two very different directives.
But Bob, aren't those instructional coaches employees of the district? They're the district?
They are, but they're paid for, five of them are paid for out of categorical aid, so it doesn't impact your, it isn't applicable to the conversation of reducing our cost.
Obviously, categorical aid is important to keep, keep in track of, but aren't there other things we can do with categorical aid?
I can't, but it doesn't save your...
That's the only thing we can do with it.
It doesn't save your general fund any money. You might do something else with it, but it has to fit in front of those, or inside of those confines of that category.
Shelley?
Right. Well, that's why I feel like we need more information about how that might look. What options are there there?
That, that goes back to, all right, so if we're, so all of this links, and you have to think of alignment, right? And if I bring you back up to 30,000-foot level, your job as a board is to approve a budget. And I understand, want to know details and things under, and that's great, and I appreciate that. Then your next job is to look at your strategic plan, and look at your portrait of a graduate, and your world's best workforce, and approve those. Our job as administration is to try figure out the best way to get you there. And I think what we've been trying to tell you with the piece of instruct, Sarah, why is, why are you, that, that is, that is our role. Our role is to try, that's why you pay people who have been in the professional quite a while. Most of us around the table is to try get you there.
I think, I think the concern that I have is that we're, as a board, being asked to make cuts to a budget that we really did not have a role in creating. And you just mentioned the strategic plan, as though it was our strategic plan, we did not have a role in creating it. We, we really had very little to do with the creation of any of these things, and now we're responsible for them. So it's frustrating. It's just a little bit frustrating. And I think it goes back to the line of, you know, what is the board responsible for? And what is administration responsible for? And I think these are things we can approve. That's why I'm frustrated.
Shelley?
Well, and just, I do have a question, but just to add to that, I do think part of the reason we're where we're at is maybe we haven't had enough details in the past. And so we can go back and forth all day about the contract conversation, but I think it's, it was people's understandings of what would come out of that. And so I think maybe we didn't have enough details then. My question was regarded to Q Comp. We've had, and the reason I ask is because a couple of teachers have said, "What about this?" Is it true that if instructional coaches were eliminated from the Q Comp, if the Q Comp board went back and said, "This is what we want to do," could they eliminate instructional coaches and then put, use PD dollars? So that would free up PD money in the general fund that could be used as general fund dollars in what we're trying to cut? Do you understand what I'm asking?
The, there's two steps to that. The, the Q Comp plan, in order to continue to be approved by MDE, would have to, in that instance, still meet the requirements of the lad, the career ladders, would be the first question to answer. The second piece would be to ensure that, in my understanding of it, is that the dollars from the Q Comp plan would not be used to supplant something that was there. And so, and here, and my last thing with that Q Comp piece is, there is no guarantee the length of time that that Q Comp money is going to be there. So that, to me, that is not a great, a great dollar to rely on for things that we're trying to do. And, and again, I go back to the, that's already in place. We can, to me, the, the question is, how much out of the professional development budget does the board really want us to cut? That's the question. That's the question. Because to, Sarah, to your question, I would, I would say that the line between what the board job is and what my job is in this particular instance is, your job is to answer that question for me. How much do you want me to cut out of that budget? My job is to say, if this is what I have left, here's what is the most important on the programming side of the house for us to continue doing.
So to that point, because that brings up a good point, can we, when we're brought back more information, find out, we know that we're way above, or whatever, the 2%, but find out exactly what that is?
Absolutely. We have, I mean, I can give you exactly what we spend out of the professional development budget. That's what our committee, the district professional development committee works on all of that. So we have it. But I can tell you this right now, I, I will continue to fight to do whatever I have to to keep instructional coaching because it's that valuable, until such time that it becomes lower on the importance list than something else that we've got going on on our side of the house.
Thank you. Director Pelletier?
Just to speak a little bit about, because we're on the topic, about instructional coaches, and I think it has merit and would hopefully provide some value to the table. I did take one of our instructional coaches up on her offer to shadow her at Andrea Schuler at the high school. And because I've had, I've said this before, I've had a lot of mixture of feelings about the program in general. And in five hours' time, we visited seven different teachers. Three of them were first or second-year teachers. The rest of them were tenured teachers. And we, it was a myriad of, of opportunity. And we, it was a myriad of, of opportunity. One of them were sit-down conversations, especially the newer teachers, really had specific questions and challenges and struggles that they were facing. And they asked poignant questions, and they, I could tell that they felt really comfortable doing that. The tenured teachers, a couple of them, just wanted a, a second set of eyes in the classroom to say, what am I, you know, what am I doing that's okay in your eyes? What am I doing that, where I could possibly improve? And then one of them, which is the one I got the most out of, was a physics teacher at the high school, and very tenured teacher, and he was working on a word wall. And Andrea, and I don't mean to speak poorly, she's not a physics gal, okay? And she, she admitted that. But what she is wickedly intelligent at is English, is English. So he looked at her and said, how can I communicate to my students better? And she took her, her knowledge, and thought about the big picture, and gave him some ideas to put on his word wall. And I thought, oh my gosh, if that isn't the most invaluable piece, putting myself in, in, in the eyes of a teacher, and if I were in a room, and, and just to have an outside perspective, a trusted outside perspective, would be invaluable to me as a teacher. And, and that is a direct impact on the kids. And, and secondly, if we're cutting, we've already cut professional development. I talked to another teacher who's actually not, not huge on instructional coaches, but he said, well, okay, you know, we've already cut our PD, and now you're going to cut instructional coaching. And not only do we not have time to look at curriculum, and we've got to go out of the classroom and, and do that, but now we don't even have an instructional coach to help guide us. And, and that's another piece of the puzzle that they can provide. So I just think sometimes if we take the time to learn about a program before we gut it and decimate it, it can, it can be invaluable, which is why, again, I think we created the situation. I want us to do better going forward, and I do not want to cut this program.
Director Burns?
And I, I guess, the point that I want to raise, or reemphasize that I said before, is that, and I, I agree with Director Weisberg's original point, which is, our job here is, today, while we're here on a Friday afternoon, is to try to identify dollars. How do we get the dollars out of the existing spending to, to balance? To get back to five percent, whatever our goal is, but we're trying to, we're talking dollars. We need to attack the dollars. And it would, it'd be my preference that if we can identify categories, be it professional development, be it administration, be it some other categories, that we say, this is a dollar amount that we are targeting, that we think that, you know, can, can we come to something that, that can reach a solution? And in that way, it maybe gives the, the administration the flexibility to work with our targeted dollars of cut.
And again, I-
Mark, I, can I, can I, Mark, I appreciate you saying that. I agree with you completely. What would you say, what is your number? What's the dollar amount, in your mind?
Well, I think, I, my goal would be to get back to the five percent threshold.
Yeah. I agree. One hundred percent.
But again, procedure-wise, I'm talking, where we go from here. Sarah's made the point on instructional coaches, others have talked about administration, and there may be some others. Anybody here, when we come back, can say, you know what, I'll listen to your case, you make it as best you can for keeping, or, or not, and I think that's fair play. And then ultimately, we individually have to make a dis, a, a decision on each of those proposed items. Director Pearson.
Sorry, so I, just procedurally, again, if we all, if most of us can agree on a number, is it then that we give that number to administration with our ideas of what we'd like to be included as part of that list? And then they bring back to us what they have?
Let me see what they say.
What I was started to say earlier is, you know, the board's job, whether, so maybe you, maybe you don't like the current strategic plan, but we currently have our portrait of a graduate, which was approved by the board, and we have our world's best workforce, which is something that we are mandated to do by the legislature, and we've had a community come together. Those are your two driving things when you look at how your resources should be spent. So typically, your administration looks at that and says, alright, to be able to reach that goal, what do we think are the things that are most important to be able to get there? So when we go through this process, if you think that that's not your goal anymore, then we're going to have a really discombobulated system if we come and just make random cuts without having the conversation of what are we trying to achieve? If we're really about teaching and learning with kids, when you look at world's best workforce, and then all those things that we've talked about for our students that we want, creativity, critical thinking, problem solving, all those kind of things, we have to have conversations about what these cuts might do and how they'll impact. Because some of them, for instance, I think one of the things that you hear us fighting so hard for the coaching program, is because we are directly in the places where we're starting to see the results. Have we been able to fully realize the results yet? No, because this is really the first year where we've had coaching on that literacy program. We're in four months of it. And so we'll be able to see those results, I'm confident of that. But, you know, as, from our principals, it was the number one thing that they wanted us to keep, to help with professional learning and accountability and growth. And it's a thing that we see making the biggest difference. We have really talented folks in those positions. So to be able to keep that learning moving forward, we feel like we need more time, and are happy to bring results with you. The other piece is, I know that, I hear from you, well, I've heard a few teachers, and I understand that some of you have colleagues and folks that you know, but we have a, a study that our SCA put out, where we have eighty-six percent approval of that coaching program. And I know that, you know, our SCA president has sent you a letter in support of that program. That's why we're fighting for it so hard, because we feel like it is really effective, and it'll help you get to the goals of the things that you want. The other piece that we shared with you is the document that we have, that we put together, because I think Chair Pelletier shared a, a good thought, and others had with me also, about, well, we don't really know what instructional programming does. What is PD? What does it really mean? And if you look at the bottom, what we tried to do is tell the story a little bit about the things that you've heard over the last two years plus, about the responsive classroom within our schools, the secondary or middle school is the developmental designs. That's really about creating a culture of welcoming, and, and really trying to make connections with students, so they feel welcome and have a respectful classroom and environment. We've talked to you a lot about BAR, our five D and instructional framework is an accountability framework, that's our professional development and evaluation, that's part of a state requirement, but our coaches help support our teachers with that. And I don't have to, I think we've had enough conversation about the following things below that, that are really important. So, just, my, my one thing that I wanted to focus on is, as we go through this, if you, as a board, say that that, and I haven't heard that from the board as a whole, but as a whole, if you say, you know, we want to revisit that strategic plan, because that's not the direction we want anymore, then that should be number one on your list to do, because otherwise, all of the resource alignment that we're going to do, isn't going to be aligned where you want to get with your goals.
Director Weisberg.
Yeah, I was just going to say, on the instructional coach part of it, even if we had a number and said, okay, what if we want to reduce it by five hundred thousand? Where, whatever fund it comes out of, however that ends up being, because I've talked to teachers over the break too, and a lot of them were favorable, and some, it doesn't seem like it's implemented equally in all the schools, which is just the nature of a program like that. But some people were super excited about it, some people said, I don't know that I utilize it that much. Some people said, if my principal maybe had less meetings, and they could be the same resource that would function as an instructional coach. So instead of getting rid of the whole program, what, what if it was cut in half? Like, what would that be?
I think you'd get more responses, like some of the people told you where it maybe isn't implemented the way it should be, because now you're, you're splitting people, essentially you're splitting people between buildings, is what you, what you're doing.
Right. I've talked to a lot of different people, a lot of different schools.
Yeah. You, you could probably configure it differently. I think you're still, to the spot where you're asking the same question, is, is it a dollar amount, or is it the program? If, if the board is saying, we don't want instructional coaching, regardless of where it's paid out of, that's one thing. If the board is saying, cut X amount of dollars, right, out of wherever, then that shifts the management side of it to the administration, to make the decision of, we think that, that this is still a valuable enough program, that we're going to figure out how to, how to do it. And we could get to the spot where we would say, maybe we will only can do it halfway. So it's just, it's just two different questions to answer.
I, I think where we're at is this, and let me kind of sum that, and then I'll give anybody who wants to make a comment before I turn it over to Denise. But I, I think the whole idea is that if it wasn't that we were in this deficit, or this shortfall, we wouldn't be here today. So, in other words, I wouldn't be arguing, or others wouldn't be arguing, take this out, or take that out. I mean, that's the backdrop for all of this. So no matter what shows up on those deductions, or they're not going to be there, or those programs are going to be taken off, it's not because we don't value them as much as we're trying to say we're trying to make up for the shortfall, whether that would revisit or restart some down the line, I'm not sure. What I'd like to do now is, is two things. One, I want to kind of go around individually and say, is there anything to add before we close? And then I want to come back to Denise, and, because I think it's important, what she heard, and what's the next step, after everybody kind of said, this is where we're at, at this point. So, let's go around the table, I'll start, we don't have to go in order, somebody can say, okay, I'm going to get my two cents in, and then we'll come back to Denise, and she will say, this is what I heard, and this is what our next step will be. Does that sound acceptable, or workable? Who would like to start off? Anybody?
Well, I can, I can start, but just to clarify, are we listing off kind of the things we want looked at, or just any final thoughts?
Take your pick.
Okay, I'm going to list off, because I think maybe it'll be helpful if they have, so-
Barb, try to capture those, if you, if you would. Or you can give them to her.
Yeah, or that. So, we talked about before, just those administrative positions, so administration, professional development, programs. We didn't talk about today consulting, but just to look at that, again, how much we're using outside, not for the things we need to use consultants for, but just the extra consultants. And then, the travel, which will be small, but just have that part of the conversation. Is it, I'll go next.
I'll go ahead and give numbers. I would like to reduce administrative expenses by seven hundred and fifty thousand. I'd like to reduce the instructional coach program by five hundred thousand, or half. I would like to continue to reduce our reliance on outside consultants by five hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess what I would like to, the, the categories, I, I'd like to look at the possibility of increasing the, the cut amount of administration. I'd like to look at what the professional development budget is, so that we have a better idea of, you know, what, what we have to work with there. And I'd also like to know timing. I, I recall that there was some discussion over if there are going to be positions looked at to be cut, what, what, when is our deadline? When do we need to make a final decision here, so that the administration can act as necessary?
Thank you.
Today? It was today, I think.
I thought it was January thirty-first, was what we-
All of my things that I've, have been on my mind have been discussed, and I think they're noted. The other thing I would like to say is that, from this point of reductions, maybe we need to send something to community engagement to start a plan to grow enrollment, increase revenue.
So almost the flip side. Thank you.
Want to go to Sarah, maybe?
Sarah, you want to go next, or you want Jennifer Pelletier?
Yeah, I, I think I have said enough, of the, at least from my points on my list. I just want to, we do need to get back up to, and I, I, I would welcome to have a new list of some additional suggestions from administration, suggestions of what we can consider. I agree, trying to keep these cuts as far away from the actual student experience is really, really critical, at least in my opinion.
All right. So I think, again, for me, the, the fund balance, what kind of numbers are palatable for that. I'm interested in the professional development only as a source of conversation. And I'm also interested in maybe looking at that list again. But, again, I've said it now, this will be my third time, we need to get to a spot where we do not go halfway on initiating programs, and then don't give them the chance to become the robust program that they deserve to be, and then cut them years down the road. That is, that is not looking for sustainability, and, that's the third time, I'll probably say it a couple more times.
Can I just-
Can I, Jim? Oh, go ahead.
You want to clarify, Sarah, or?
Oh yeah, no, you can go ahead and clarify then, I just have another follow-up question, I forgot.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, Chair, Director Pelletier, the fund balance, what's palatable? What do you want us to do with that?
Well, yeah, right. I actually am, I am interested in not, I am interested in, in utilizing the fund balance for, for the cuts.
So is the question, perhaps, if one of the emergencies that Director Hoheisel had talked about, if one of them, or maybe a couple, had happened, what would we need to have in there to help cover that? Would that help?
I, well, I- No, I'm confused.
I think she's just saying she's okay with the second option.
Yep, I'm, you're just making a statement.
And, and again, thank you. And, and again, for now, because I agree with the rest of my peers, that five, that number is, we need, we need to start hitting that number. So, for this moment in time, that is what I'm interested in.
Thank you.
So, can I just quick ask my, my question that I forgot? I think I heard you say, Denise, that you're starting to see some positive results from, I'm not sure if it was the instructional coaching, or the new literacy program, or, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, maybe both. Would there be some way that you could give us some insight on what you're seeing, and, because I think ultimately, you know, we're, it's, we're all trying to do what's best for our students, of course. And so any information that we can, that we, as a board, can have, that shows while this is working, and here's how, and here's what it's doing, would be incredibly wonderful to hear.
Sure, we can do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, just one thing that I thought of before, when you were talking about strategic plan, and I know, a lot of us, we want to get to the point that we're dreaming, instead of just like, cutting. So I'm hoping that simultaneously, we can do, maybe as part of the retreat, we can kind of talk about, like, what are our hopes and dreams? What do we want to see for this district? And I think that'll help us, it'll help you see more of our priorities, and we'll be able to move forward together.
You might need to have a weekend retreat. Your list is growing.
Not out of state.
But, but again, one of the problems you run into-
And no mileage.
Is, when people or programs are threatened, they will come and advocate. I've been in education, one form or another, all my life. There aren't a lot of years that, you know, they talk years of plenty, and then years of starvation. There's unfortunately, more of those cuts years, et cetera. Plus, I would say this always, advocate, advocate, advocate. And keep people informed, and not just at the eleventh hour. One of the things I commend my colleagues, board members, is, what you're doing today, even putting something on the table, takes a certain amount of courage. Because you don't make instant friends when you say, gee, I'm going to do it over here. So that takes courage. The, the point is, and, and I say it again and again, if we had our druthers, we wouldn't be here today. Here's the, the last areas, and, and these are, are somewhat, after a long year, or many years in education, I'd say, where I'd look that I, I think are, are- I'd say, where I'd look that I think are less harmful or less threatening. One, and I've mentioned it before, is when positions come open, oftentimes unexpectedly, and whether it's teaching, which, that won't work in most of those, but some it might. When any position comes open, reexamine that position, whether it's administrative, whether it's a director. I don't want to undo contracts, but there are opportunities sometimes to reassess. And to their credit, I know both our superintendent and our assistant superintendent mentioned a couple days ago to me, we're going to find out, visit another district, how you get by unless. So I'm saying, they're making that effort as well, and we will urge them to continue that. The other thing, I'd say this, and we mentioned conferences, in some conferences, I know this, I know this from my own experience and others, some conferences are built into contracts. When I was a curriculum director, part that I wanted in my contract is that every year, if I chose to, I could go to ASCD, which is Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. That was important to keep me current. Now, that was built into my contract. But there are conferences, sometimes people may come up with that aren't, and I'm saying, unfortunately, in these tight times, and I hope they don't last long, but they may, you got to look at more of those with, yeah, this year you got to give more rationale, or maybe this year you got to go without. The one that's mentioned, I think Shelley may have mentioned that as well, is outside consultants. And again, there are consultants, and I know, because we've done some of that this week, that I'm saying, we need them. But it's a hard sell, but you got to continually sell.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Because this has come up before with the consultants, so maybe have it again just a little bit, but are you referring to consultants like the entire blanket? Because I, I believe that, so what, can you just elaborate on that?
What I mean is this, like, for example, if we determine somewhere along the line as a board, that we're going to go out for a levy renewal, there are people who can scientifically, in quotation marks, go out, tap the community, and say, where's the community at? Who's for us? What are we going to be up against? Sometimes it becomes a dollar amount. What does the survey tell us of, what's the tipping point? Where you're more likely to pass or not? That's a consultant, I'm saying. It's a wise investment if you're trying to renew something for seven or eight million dollars, that you spend 20,000 or double that amount to find out where the community's at. We all have our perceptions of the community, but it might be influenced, and we might have some blind sides. That's how you might do it. We looked at, and Denise was kind enough to share that with us, about three or four pages of consultants. Some of those, you have to bring in, and that's what makes that list. Some of it are more discretionary.
So is that the list that you're talking about bringing to the table again?
I think it's just an amount, if we.
Yeah. And it's, again, they'll be the judge in some cases where those are discretionary, where we got to do it, and where we can do those in-house. But I'm saying, in all of these things I'm mentioning, it's like more scrutiny, it's like more over the shoulder, and I think, I think they'll be able to work with that kind of guideline. Another.
Denise wanted to say something.
What might be helpful is, you know, we have that summary sheet, and then we have the thick where you can see line by line everyone. It might be helpful, helpful for us to just, to give the board an increased understanding of what those are. Most of them that we probably actually have flexibility are with our teaching and learning, and with our cutting back on PD, that's going to automatically happen, that we aren't going to have people coming in to help support that. As we tried to share and lay out with an example with HR, there's not much you can cut there unless you want to increase the cost for the district, similarly for our facilities and operations. But we're happy to go through and kind of talk through those to show you, you know, here's, you know, blood in the water. We, they'll come in and do that work for us, much cheaper than if we had somebody on staff to be able to do that. So we are happy to go through so you have a good understanding. I think what you'll see the most flexibility is under the programming. And again, for many of those, it's an expenditure for us because we pay for it, but we also get funding from Partnership Plan and many other places to pay for that student programming. So that'll give you a little bit more of the details so you know what that looks like.
And the last one I would add to my list, and I'm going to turn it over to Denise and ask her to tell us what she heard. And that is to look close at administrative positions. But I'm not saying backwards, I want to look forward and say going forward. Please.
Thank you, Mike. Something you just said, start a question for me. I know that in the budget assumptions that were, we talked about at the very beginning, the assumption for enrollment was to be, stay the same at 8,300. I think we've had quite a few different conversations suggesting that we might be increasing, you know, over the coming years. I wonder what the budget looks like with an assumed, like, if we could find, what if we increase by 25 students, 50 students, whatever, in a given year? How does that impact the total budget, all else remaining the same? And, or, you know, essentially, obviously, there are expenses associated with having more students, but is that clear enough? Like, how does the increase at the moment, is that something we could maybe explore a little bit?
I think Tina hinted at that as well.
Well, and I was just, Kristen can probably answer this better, but when we, because we were in the budget, the finance committee was part of the budget committee, and we, some areas were more conservative in, because other areas we were less conservative in. So we could get nothing in state funding, and then that would, so if we went high on enrollment and then high on state funding, and they both came in low, we'd be kind of in trouble. So we tried to go more conservative on some and less on others, so hopefully we'll balance out. So it'd be, you know, it'd be a bonus if we can get more students, but if we went much higher, I, and I think the consensus of the group was, we want to be careful about going much higher, just because of, we don't know where some of those other areas are going to flesh out in the end.
Well, and Director Stivlin, thank you, Shelley, that's exactly the conversation. I would say, based on even numbers that we're seeing now, at least for 1920, and it would be fantastic if October 1, they're higher. That's why we do the revised budget, and it looks better. I would say there could be some latitude in years two and three, that absolutely, you know, I mean, there might be variation on what we looked at, but Director Pearson's right that we, can we do it? We absolutely can. I'm saying, there's nothing that's indicating there's going to be a significant variance year one. But as you guys look out to the years two and three and the trajectory, and do we try to meet the fun balance goal this year versus, you know, you might have more opportunity for that enrollment in years two and three, and you're willing to pace it out. I mean, that's part of the discussion, and that's absolutely appropriate.
Plus, I think I've heard, I've heard it said a number of times, more students is a plus for us. So the more kids and parents that we can attract to our schools, now somewhere you get a tipping point, I'd rather have that problem, too many kids. I like more. Plus, I think we got the programs for them. Shelley?
I agree.
I think you could get consensus on that one, Mike.
Yes, yes.
Well, and one thing I do, I want to commend the group, this, these are hard decisions, and I think you've been civil, and I think you've been respectful, and I thank you for that, and staff as well, because those are tough. Denise?
So a recap. I'm hearing that we want to move towards cutting the additional 1.8, and so we're going to take the pass list, so you just have that, and we're going to add, come back with more suggestions. And then Barb and I have both taken notes on everything that you've said about the consultants and looking at what we've done at travel. I think it'd be important to show you how much we've probably saved already this year from not going to many of the things at staff, and they have done that out of the goodness of their hearts, even though they know that they're allowed that in their contract. So we can come back with that information for you. And then also, I heard from Sarah, if we can just show the initial results from the coaching data, the hard data probably be for you to be able to look at your MCA reading results. We won't have those till spring, but there are a number of things that we have data from our literacy that we can show you as just, one of the things that comes off the top of my head for the effectiveness of our coaches. So we're happy to do that.
Any party words, comments, questions?
No, I would just like to say thank you to Kristen for being very explanatory on some of those things. Thank you.
Anybody else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
移到
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your right hand.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.